Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening. At our City Council meeting, we'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the room?
Adamson.
Here.
Bray.
Here.
Cheetham.
Here.
Johnston.
Here.
Lurick.
Black.
Here. Thank you. If you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which will, if you'd remain standing for the invocation, which will be offered by Pastor Brian Griffin from the Pocatello Baptist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for inviting me. Let's pray. Father God, we come in before you, Lord, please, thank you and praise you so much for the, just the blessings, Lord, Father, of the freedom we enjoy in this nation, Lord, and just for the way we're governed, our Father. And, Lord, we pray that you would, in particular, this night, Lord, go before these meetings. May you just be in this, bring unity, give wisdom where wisdom is needed, Lord, and help the council, our Father, and our mayor to make decisions for the better of our community, Lord. We just thank you and praise you for everything you do now, and pray you receive the glory from all these things, in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three, is a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, payroll and material claims. Council may wish to consider payroll and material claims for the month of January 2018. Good evening, Joyce.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Joyce Froschain, Chief Financial Officer for the city. Tonight I'm presenting the payroll and material claims report for the month of January. Payroll and material claims totaled $5,706,465. Payroll-related claims were $3,605,081. We had 672 employees at the end of the month. We had changes in field positions of a decrease in four in the full-time status, a decrease of one in the half-time status, an increase of one in the part-time status, and a decrease of one in the elected status, for an overall decrease of five. Vendor claims totaled $2,101,383. Large vendor claims are presented. I have highlighted three vendor payments for your review. Key Bank, $542,426. This is the water revenue bond series 2017. Northwest Firefighters Employee Benefit Trust, $96,218. This is fire and ambulance medical insurance for the month of January. T.O. Engineering Company, $76,712. Airport construction, runway and taxiway project. This report includes 82.06 percent of all vendor claims for the month. On the back of the report, I present to you the January purchase card activity. We had 1,120 transactions for the month of January totaling $245,330, with 164 cardholders who used their cards. Four purchase agents had monthly totals greater than $10,000, and the types of expenditures are listed for your review. This concludes my report.
Any questions, council? For Joyce? Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you.
We'll move on to B, Airport Commission appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Larry Bell to serve as a member of the Airport Commission, replacing Don Sparrow Clark, whose term expired. Mr. Bell's term will begin February 6, 2018, and will expire February 6, 2020. C, Animal Shelter Advisory Board reappointments. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Mary Johnson and Daniel Lenahan to continue their service as members of the Animals Shelter Advisory Board. Ms. Johnson's term will begin February 8, 2018, and will expire February 8, 2020. Mr. Lenahan's turn will begin February 2, 2018, and will expire February 2, 2020. D, Pocatello Development Authority appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Terrell Tovey to serve as Bannock County Representative on the Pocatello Development Authority, replacing Evan Fraser. Mr. Tovey's turn will begin February 2, 2018, and will expire May 1, 2019. E, council decision. Annexation of land east of Interstate 15 and north of East Chubbuck Road. Council may wish to adopt this decision and approve the annexation of a parcel of land comprised of approximately 296.82 acres owned by Town Center JV, Porton of Development LLC, the Millennial Development Partners, Robert Hart, and Porton of Health Trust Incorporated. The parcel is located east of Interstate 15 and north of East Chubbuck Road and will be zoned as follows. One, Commercial General, CG, covering 145 acres. Two, Residential Commercial Professional, RCP, covering 108.52 acres, which includes 21.04 acres of open space. And three, Residential Medium Density Single Family, RMS, covering 32.40 acres. Four, Residential Estate, RE, covering two acres. And five, Olympus Road with a roundabout covering 8.890 acres. F, council decision, denial of planning and zoning directors' interpretation appeal. Packer. Council may wish to adopt this decision denying Dave Packer's appeal of the planning and zoning directors' interpretation of the zoning ordinance under Pocatello Municipal Code, Section 17.03.240.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion by Johnston and a second by Cheetham. Connie, could you please call the room?
Johnston.
Yes.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes. Thank you. Agenda Item Four, Communication and Proclamation. We have no proclamations, but we do have, it looks like, a couple scout troops out here. So let's start right over here. We need one of the scouts, not the leader, but one of the scouts to stand up and tell us what troop you're from and...
Hi, we're Scout Troop 394 from the Pocatello Spanish branch.
Perfect. 394, thank you for being here. Are you a part of a clear back in the back?
No.
You want to stand up and tell us what troop you're with? 330?
From Chubbuck.
Super. Thank you for being here tonight. We had some in the back row over there that are trying to hide. I just saw both of them duck their heads down like that.
[laughter]
Well, just a minute. You're guys in the very back, sit down for a second. You right here, you're up. Tell us where you're from.
I'm from Troop 131, Chubbuck, Chris.
Fantastic. Thank you for being here. All right, now clear back in the back.
We're from 345, Chubbuck, 6th Ward.
Fantastic. Thank you very much for being here. It's always good to see you in the audience. Then we will move on to Agenda Item Five. Did I miss any scouts out there? I don't want to miss somebody's opportunity. All right. One of the scout leaders over here on the right is the father of the cutest grandbaby that's ever been, but we won't talk about him. Move on to Agenda Item Number Five, is a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On February 8 at 9:00 a.m. is a study session. On February 15 at 1:00 p.m. is a study session clarification working lunch. At 5:00 p.m. a special meeting with Police Union Quarterly Update. At 5:30 clarification meeting. At 6:00 p.m. is a regular council meeting. All of those events are on February 15. Other events, the 40th Annual Simplot Games will be held at Holt Arena, February 15 through the 17th. On February 19, city offices will be closed for President's Day. However, garbage and recycle pickups will remain on schedule. We will move on to Agenda Item Number Six, Public Hearing Annexation. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Billy Satterfield on behalf of Juniper Land Corp., represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, to annex and zone 13.19, or .91 acres, more or less, of land located east of Juniper Reserve Division 1 and south of Partridge Ridge Subdivision, 5th Edition. The proposed zoning for the property is residential low-density, a comprehensive plan/land-use map designation is proposed to accommodate the requested zoning. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request at their meeting on January 10, 2018. I declare the public hearing open.
Do we need to find out about the expertise?
Yes.
Council, has there been any expertise, communication, or contact?
No.
I've had a few phone calls and official contacts. It's mainly about our procedures and stuff.
Okay. Okay. Super. Thank you. Mitch.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Mitchell Garrett. I'm with Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying at 600 East Oak here in Pocatello. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, representing the applicant on this project. The parcel land we're discussing is highlighted on the screen. You can see it's kind of in gray here. It's approximately 14 acres. You can see on the picture, this is Satterfield Drive here, this is Pocatello Creek Road. In this location, Michelle Drive kind of is immediately north of the property. This is the meeting house on Michelle. So we're just south of that facility. So this is part of the Juniper Reserve development. Much of this land was annexed with Juniper Reserve Division 1. The construction on that project was completed this last construction season, and this is basically just a continuation of that proposal. You can see here, basically, this, what you see highlighted in this area will be Juniper Reserve Division 2, and part of the city limits kind of bisects through that proposed project, which is the reason why we're here, to discuss annexation. So I think the details of the request are, we're requesting residential low-density. That's essentially the same zoning that's around the project. That's been consistent with all the zoning that has happened up on the east bench, for the most part. Mr. Satterfield actually enlarges his lots pretty significantly bigger than what's required by the residential low-density zoning, but that is what is requested tonight. In our packet, you can see there's six criteria for approval of the annexation zoning. I believe we've gone in detail as to how we meet those criteria. We met with planning and zoning last month, and the project was recommended for annexation into the city by them, along with a zoning designation of residential low-density. So I would just ask that you follow their recommendation and accept this annexation into the city, and I can answer questions if you have any, or can hear from everyone else.
Any questions, council, right now? Thank you, Mitch. Staff representative?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Carl Anderson, and I'm a senior planner here with the city of Pocatello. As stated previously, the application that you have before you for consideration is for the annexation and zoning of approximately 13.91 acres of land located east of Juniper Reserve Division 1, and south of Partridge Ridge Subdivision 5, 5th Edition, which would extend the city boundary east of Juniper Reserve Division 1. The application was submitted by Billy Satterfield on behalf of Juniper Land Corporation and represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying. The proposed zoning for the property is residential low-density, and a comprehensive plan/land-use map designation of residential was also requested. The request is in statutory compliance with Idaho State Code as a Category A annexation where all private landowners have consented to the annexation. In this case, the applicant is a property owner and has consented to the proposed annexation. The property is located within the area of city impact and lies contiguous to the existing city limits at the westmost property line. Based on staff's analysis contained in the staff report, a residential comprehensive plan designation is appropriate for the subject property and is consistent with the adjacent and requested zoning of residential low-density, which allows for single-family home dwellings and a mix of other housing types, such as accessory dwellings, townhomes, two-family dwellings. Some civic and institutional uses are also conditionally permitted. All noticing requirements have been met. Public hearing was heard, or public comment was received at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on January 10, and two public, written public comments have been received, and which you have before you at this time since that meeting. The council may wish to adopt the Planning and Zoning Commission's findings effect and approve the annexation of the 13.91 acres of land extending the city corporate boundaries east of Juniper Reserve Division 1. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to stand for questions. Merrill Quill, the Public Works Department, is also here to answer questions if you have any.
Super. Thank you. Have you received any comments about this?
The two that I... The two written comments have been, we have received and we have before you.
Okay.
I have not personally received any phone calls on this, but we have received public comments.
So a few communications, forms of communication. I understand there was an email also to the council that they also received an email, and we'll get that forwarded to you for the record as well.
I forwarded that to you.
You have forwarded already? Okay. Super. So you do have that other... All right. Super. Have we had any others?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Then we will look for any testimony of those supporting the application.
Mitch, do you want to move your laptop so people have...
No, that would be you, Fred. You're up.
I'm okay.
Mitch, just easy to step out of your way.
I'm an old time... Oh, I'll write it down here for you.
An old time. Are you going to write "an old time" in there?
Yeah, I can put all that in.
I'm pleasantly surprised at how much depth Merrill and Matt and all of these people go into, and the gentlemen who have prepared all this. They go through paragraph by paragraph, sentence by sentence, and write down a word by word, and they see what is required and what is requested, and they meet those requirements and those requests. This city is wonderful. I have lived here since 1979, and some of you have lived here a long time, or a lot longer than that. I bought the house I live in 30 years ago, and I watched this city grow. I was almost alone up there, up in Sagewood Hills. This morning, I watched that fire. I can see Big Southern Butte, I can see the Twin Buttes. I walked the wellness center. I love this community. This is a good program, and I urge the council to accept it and to go with it and to help us develop and expand and grow in this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any others in support of the application? Any uncommitted to the application? Any... Okay, let's get moving. Let's do it. Uncommitted. Whoa, 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 when you do this, do you mean you're opposed to it, or do you mean you're uncommitted?
Yeah, is that what you're saying?
No, uncommitted and opposed would be two different things.
Always.
But we'll stay standing right there, because I'm right now with where you are, opposed to it. Any opposed to the application? Yes, ma'am. No, no, go ahead.
Okay.
We'll go here, then here. That's our hand over here.
Sign in and then say my name?
Sign in, please, yes.
You didn't have to pass it to the others.
Oh, yeah, why don't you just hand that right here down, and we'll just pass it down the row, and that way we're not wasting time filling that out.
Sorry.
You're okay.
My name's Candace Apostle, and I live right where that street starts the new road, I'm believing, and I love Pocatello as well, and I think growth is great. I'm just wondering, schools, it did say civic, and I don't know if they're talking about, where's everyone going to school? That's what I'm worried about. And the roads. So Satterfield itself, there's a road, there's a part of the road that's been heat-sealed. I don't know. You guys probably know, probably seven, 10 times a year. It has not properly been fixed. It's always, it's in front of this house, right there on Satterfield, it's always just being filled. We're going to have, I heard over 90 houses, about 90 houses, they want to build up there. I could be wrong, the email I got could have been wrong, but I had to get an email from a neighbor because I guess they felt only 13 people in the surrounding area needed to be, I don't know if that's the law or what, needed to be notified. I live right where that street is being built right now. I think it's great. How are they going to get all these people to school? How are these roads going to be maintained with all these huge trucks coming and building when they're already falling apart? And I think that's just like my concerns. So I don't want to say I'm 100% against growth in Pocatello, I just want it to be smart. I just, where's everyone going to school? How are the roads going to be maintained? Can our city handle it? So that's my...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Black. Paul Gassande, City Council, good to be here once again before you. We have concerns as well. My wife Dorothy and I bought their own Stone Ridge about 10 years ago, and we always knew there was going to be some development in the ravine behind us, but when we look at the scope of development, our concerns are the same. We've already seen an increase of traffic on Stone Ridge. We know that the congestion of the schools is definitely going to be a factor, and we're just concerned about that much development behind us there, the community that's gone in and the homes that are there. I can see that and welcome that, but it's the further expansion that causes us concern with congestion. The road there on Stone Ridge that comes out, the traffic both from both sides will empty in there onto Stone Ridge and then down through Satterfield. So we're concerned about that. We know that the North Gate project has tremendous expansion growth there, and I don't know why that maybe couldn't be sufficient for the expansions that we're seeing. Some 10,000 homes, I understand, are going up on the other end of Satterfield, and I think that's a great area to develop. We would just like to keep it as it is in the neighborhood with less congestion that I think that that's going to bring into that Stone Ridge area. We love it there. I currently take my little puppy dog and I hike around that back area. I'd like to continue to do that. It's a great area, wilderness, the rabbits. Most of them are gone, the deer are gone, and I understand that, but this, if we could halt it about that, we would appreciate it personally. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other opposed? I don't know who's next. So who's after him? You want to walk around there, and you can get in line.
Hi, Brad Yates. I live on Stone Ridge Drive at 1468, so right about where that first T-shaped cul-de-sac is, straight across. I'm one who submitted written comments before this, including pictures. The development is not being cared for as is. There are dumps back there, both of sage, junipers, trash from the infrastructure that was put in. You know, it's not finished because it's garbage left behind. Nothing should be approved, in my view, even considered for approval, until that is cleaned up. It's not neighborly, right? I'm not against development, but I'm for thoughtful development, and I'm for good neighbors, right? Steve Satterfield and Ryan Satterfield were the previous developers on our street, right? Were customers of theirs, right? And this is the way that they treat their customers. I don't think they should be moving forward, or you should be authorizing them to move forward. I don't think the Planning Commission should have authorized a recommendation here based on the garbage that's back there. It needs to be cleaned up, okay? Then you can look at, you know, are the schools prepared for it? Can the traffic handle it? Can the streets be serviced? Those are all legitimate concerns of all the neighbors. But let's take care of first things first, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Adam Jacob Smire. I live at 1474 Stone Ridge Drive here in Pocatello. I attended the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing on January 10, and expressed my questions and concerns as a neutral party. Since that meeting, I've spoken to the school district and my fellow neighbors. I am now opposed to the annexing of this area. In my conversations with the school district, it appears they are not prepared to handle the current residential growth in the Highland area. The timing of their plans to try and address this issue do not correspond with the demand they now face. Sustainable growth in Pocatello should mean that government agencies prudently work together so that one department doesn't create problems for the other. I am not confident in the city of Pocatello and the Pocatello-Chubbuck School District's current coordination of educational services. It is insufficient for the proposed expansion of residential housing in our area, which includes this area. The Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation was not unanimous. During the January 10 meeting, Julia Sanders touched on the idea that Pocatello needs to determine its boundaries and find where they want to draw the line on development creep. The commission recognized you, the city council, as the legislative body that can do this. I suggest you start having those conversations. Determine why you feel it is needed to fill in all the available open space in Pocatello when there is ample available land to develop northeast of this location, in addition to the future North Gate community. The rest of my prepared statement was emailed to many of you. Since then, I've been informed by Linda Lurick that my concerns will not likely change the outcome of this evening. I was disappointed to hear that. I recognize that Billy Satterfield can still build on this property despite what you vote this evening. I understand by that, by bringing this property into Pocatello, it generates another revenue stream for the city. I'm still against it, because I think your decision can still influence his future plans. I guess all that I can plead for now is that you work closely with the school district and use this land to the betterment of the community in my neighborhood. Instead of filling the side of a hill with homes, consider beautifying it with a city park or dedicated open space. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Claudia Ortega. My husband Frank and I live on Stone Ridge. We would have had no idea that any of this was going on if it wasn't for Mr. Jacobs Meyer here, who came around, and he personally made copies, because apparently only 13 people are seemingly affected by this. We have concerns. My neighbors had to fight to get their kids into Idahow, because they wanted, the school wanted their kids on Stone Ridge to get bused to Chubbuck to go to school. Now, my husband and I pay $6,500 a year in property taxes. $3,975 of that is city tax. $1,700 is county tax. So I'd like to know, my husband and I would like to know, who's going to build the fire, more fire? Who's going to build police? Who's going to finance all that? I mean, we can't bear more property taxes to fund this stuff, and the developer's not going to do it. So I'm just wondering, from all of you, if one of you can tell us, who's going to handle all that? Who's going to build the new school? Who's going to handle more fire, more police? Because more people means we're going to need more of that. You know, and I'm curious, what's the response time for fire and police now? You know, can we bear a longer response time? So I think those things all need to be seriously looked at before you guys just give a developer, any developer. Look, I like Billy Satterfield, he's a great guy, but before the city gives any developer carte blanche to just build and annex and everything else, we're the people who live here. We are paying those taxes on those properties, and while housing may be affordable in Pocatello, let me just tell you, property taxes are not, okay? So I think that the council and the mayor need to start listening to the people who are footing the bill before they agree behind closed doors to let developers do whatever they want. That's not okay. We need to be heard, and we have a right to be heard. And if it wasn't for Mr. Jacobs Meyer, you'd probably have two people sitting in this room today, which is ludicrous and, quite frankly, offensive, that nobody in the city thinks that I, considering it's going to directly affect me, that I'm entitled to find out that this is going on and that there's a hearing about it tonight. That's absurd. Absurd. And I'm hearing a lot of "amen's" from over here. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir. But I'm just saying, the way y'all do things needs to be changed. This is not okay... This is not okay. This is not acceptable. We are citizens, residents of this town. We love this city. We do. But I'm not a doormat. Nobody's gonna steamroll over us. That's not acceptable to me, and it shouldn't be acceptable to any of you even.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Sir?
It's all right.
I am Scott Bransley. I live at 1480 Stone Ridge Drive, so I get to see the backside of all of that, and amen to what's been said. And I too love Pocatello, and I love to see that we're growing. It hurts me when I hear things like Herberger's going out of business. That's terrible. But I know that the point being is, is we need to grow. But the thing is, is it bothers me about this, is I've looked at that and I see the traffic that comes up Shawn to, up onto our street, Stone Ridge, and there's a fair amount that not only do that, but they bypass Satterfield and get on Summit from there. I've watched them fly by my house, go right through, and then get on Summit. So we have a lot of traffic that goes through that area. That's understandable. I mean, we've chosen to live where we are, and I'm not against development. Don't get me wrong with that. It's just, do we have to take every piece of land and turn it into, you know, someone's lot? And that is, and granted, I know you said you don't see the deer. I do. We still, and I hear the coyotes at night, and it's wonderful to see that. And I saw a huge amount of turkeys come through. So we do have natural thing. Is that gonna happen? No. The only thing that we have is, as you can see, there's a piece of there, the only thing that they leave in natural is where they have to, and that is for drainage. I don't mind growth. I don't mind having houses up in there. By all means, the Satterfields that own that land, they have the right to do that. But do they have the right to put every, every piece of land into property? In other words, why can't we have some natural fauna that goes through there and make it a little bit more open or whatever? I, you know, like I said, that is a lot of houses up in there. That's a lot of houses, and Shawn is what's gonna feed it. So I feel sorry for those poor people that live on Shawn and then trying to wrap up there. It's all gonna be led off of that Shadow Pine Way that's gonna come through there, and there is gonna be a ton of people that are gonna try to do that. And granted, they've done a wonderful job in designing it, and I know that they said that their lots are big and that type of thing. It's still gonna take away anything where all of the nature is going to be. And so, and I understand that, but could we at least allow some of that to be more natural and take away and not have to have 60 new homes up there or 100 new homes as they go up farther up into that? But maybe just back it off a little bit and give us a little bit more natural area up there so that it's, you know, a little, I mean, that's why we live in Pocatello. I love those mountains. That's why I moved up there, is because I love that view. And I, like I say, I don't mind a little bit of development, but maybe we can scale it back just a bit? Thank you.
Thank you. Any others opposed? Thank you. We would let Mitch speak to some of these questions anyway.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. It's nice to hear from the residents, although I'm surprised by all the negative comments, I guess. One thing I want to point out, you know, if you zoom out, and I have to apologize because I wasn't here when this happened four generations ago, maybe it was five. Ryan can probably correct me over there, but look at, look at this area. This is what the Satterfields have developed. They've always intended on developing up the hill to the remainder of their property. This is part of the master plan. Have they dedicated open spaces? Yes, they have. We have Highland Golf Course. We've dedicated areas for parks and schools and those types of things to support this development. For sure, it's been done. The Satterfields have built this community, a large portion of it. This project is another facet of a project that's been ongoing for generations. And the people that lived down on Shawn and Maryland and even Fairway Drive were probably standing here 30 years ago, 50 years ago, saying, you know, we wanna keep the rest of this open and we don't wanna develop it. And our community needs to grow. This is an area that has been planned for growth for 100, 100 years, and we need to continue to allow it to grow. Plans have changed over that time. Certainly, we've evolved with the regulations and how things happen, but this is a good spot for growth. Yes, the North Gate project's coming and everybody knows about it, but not everybody's gonna wanna live in the North Gate project. We need other choices and other areas and other places for this population that we hope is going to grow to live. A couple of things I forgot to mention in my presentation was, one of the things this does do is it provides connectivity of the streets. Some of the utilities have already been extended through this area. It makes it an ideal candidate for annexation for addition to the city. As far as the school district goes, I would say you would have to be living under a rock not to understand that this area is where our growth as Pocatello is. And I think that they certainly have been looking into it. I know they get consulted with every single application. We rarely hear a comment back from the school district, but they certainly have opportunity to comment, and they should be planning for the growth. It's not, it's not like it's been happening in a bubble. This is, this is the area, again, if you go back to Pocatello Creek Road and you look up east, that's where the growth's been happening. That's what the Satterfields have been doing for the last 100 years, and that's where it continues to grow.
Should be an actual...
Excuse me, sir. Let's let him finish. Thank you.
We certainly understand that the schools are stressed in that area, and that's not something that we necessarily have control over. That's, and you don't necessarily have control over that either. I will say that housing stock in Pocatello right now is in short supply. We need the houses. We need the lots to build on. We had comments about some of the trash and things like that. I mentioned it, Planning and Zoning. We will get that cleaned up. That was part of the contract. Again, this project barely finished at the end of the fall, basically into the winter conditions, and that stuff will get cleaned up and taken care of. I wish I would have received the pictures so that I could see what everybody's concerned about, but we certainly will take care of that. As far as natural areas, again, this is adjacent to existing homes and growth. This is where the growth was planned to be. There's growth east of it. It's already developed east of this project, and it's developed to the west. This is where it makes sense for Pocatello to have housing. So I would, I hear the concerns. I believe that we have addressed the concerns, although the neighbors may not believe that, but I believe they have been addressed through the planning, through appropriate planning, and I think that this project, again, meets the conditions for annexation and should be, should be approved by you for this development. Do you have questions?
Question?
Could you blow that back up and show me Stone Ridge and Shawn?
So Shawn Street is, comes off of Satterfield Drive. This is Shawn Street. This is Stone Ridge Drive.
Okay.
And Stone Ridge Drive loops around and connects over to Michelle and then actually over into Summit.
Okay.
And this is Summit here. So Stone Ridge is this location. And it is true that a number of these vehicles are going to feed down this street, connect into Stone Ridge, and then out onto Shawn. That's where a good chunk of those vehicles will go. But as you get east on the hill, again, some of the vehicles are going to start to go down Shadow Pines and follow Michelle down as well, and potentially even go over to Summit Drive. There are a lot of interconnected roads in this area. They're residential streets, and most of the traffic is residential traffic associated with the homes that live there. It's not, if you notice how this was created, some of the, you know, some of this Shadow Pines, which is the street that we're currently developing on, some of the reason why that came through where it was is because of the location of the crossing where it could actually fit with the topography. But it's also been designed so that people have to stop, they have to turn, they have to slow down. It's not a real direct route in and out of there so that it helps to control and manage the speeds. And if you look at the streets, those kind of curve and do those types of things. And so, there has been thought put into how that traffic moves through this area and is going to move through there at some point.
The white T, is that a street there?
Here?
Yeah, the bottom right there.
So where you see highlighted a little bit in a little bit more detail, that will be Partridge, or Juniper Reserve Division 2.
Okay.
So that's, that's the next, that will be the next development project.
And that's a designed street that has that little T at the bottom?
This?
Yeah.
Hammerhead?
Hammerhead.
Yep.
And that's past our department?
That's an approved turnaround accepted by the city of Pocatello. They've been constructed here. We've placed them in a number of locations throughout the city.
Any other questions?
We're not talking about the details of the development. We're talking about annexing this land for the development.
We're approving the residential lots as part of that.
Just the, just the zoning of residential?
Just the zoning, annexation and zoning, the lots will come later.
Citizens?
I do. I do. I was going to ask that, I mean, I was going down through here, they've asked a number of questions. He answered the school question, he answered some parks and open space questions, but I've got a concern, if there are only 13 people notified, is there a reason, and what is that reason?
Well, what, how you get notified is basically around the annexation area, so you have to notify a certain radius around the annexation area, and that's what...
You're telling me there's only 13 people?
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am. Sorry.
That's where it got notified. And I believe that the city also places a sign on the property and does other ways to notify, but that, that's how, it's by state code.
So, so I, so what is the radius?
It's 300-foot radius from the annexation boundary, not the subdivision boundary from the annexation boundary.
So 300 feet from the edge of the boundaries?
Yeah, from the red.
Okay. All right. And that's the, that's state statute?
That's city. That has nothing to do with you.
Okay.
And I think that you guys have adopted that as well.
I think we have too. I, I think we have too. And then, also, this sign, we've got a public notice sign. Where does this sign go? Does it go back in there? Does it go, where do you put that? There's a sign up here. There's the little public notice sign, okay?
I don't know.
The city places it.
I can read exactly where it is.
Well, I'm not asking you, though. I appreciate that, sir.
I don't, I don't place that sign. The city's down.
Okay, I'll have Carl come up and explain that, where that is. Do we have any other questions for?
You wanna know the answer to your question?
He, I'm gonna get that from our staff. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Member of the council, the sign is placed on Shadow Pines Way there at the end and should be on the subject property there, and I believe it is, and it was placed in a location where hopefully residents can actually see this on.
It's not here for any of the...
So, I'm sorry, there again, sir. Thank you very much. I appreciate it, but we're not asking for comment anymore from the gallery. I've got our staff here, we've got the representative here, we're trying to get the information as needed for us to be able to make a decision, and I apologize, but we're past that thing. Thank you.
Hopefully, an informed decision.
I don't wanna have him removed, but we may have to. So please, please, let's not go there anymore. So this sign, explain to me, on Shadow Mountain, you said?
At the end, the Shadow Pines Way.
Shadow Pines?
It should be placed...
Can you take the...
Can you show us the scroll?
I believe that it's placed here, looking at the map. I, you know, placing it in a location where hopefully residents who see, can actually see where the future development will occur.
Is there a sign on the other side of that as well, or no?
There is not, Mr. Mayor. This annexation is here. The road is undeveloped all the way to this point.
Okay.
So there's, the sign is just on the other location where hopefully traffic can see the sign.
So we don't have a road going through there yet?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Counselman Bray?
Does Satterfield, because that seems to be the place where everybody's gonna primarily hit, does it connect north to anything? Does it go...
I'm sorry, does Satterfield connect north to...
Yeah, I mean, can they get down to Chubak Road or something like that from there?
Yes. If you, well, if you go along Satterfield and tell I believe Jerome, where you would then take another left, right on Olympus, and then to Chubak Road, would be how that would connect eventually.
Okay. Any other questions, council?
I had a comment. I heard a statistic today, and maybe our council president can confirm this, but I heard that the number of available houses has dropped below...
Single-family dwellings, 93 for sale.
Has it ever been that low in recent memory?
Not recently.
Any other questions? Thank you. Any questions for Mitch? Get him back up here. Any questions for anybody else? Okay. Hearing none, then I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, this item is before you. How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Mayor, I've moved we approve Agenda Item Number 6, the annexation of this development.
And adopt the findings of fact?
Yes, and adopt the findings of the, Finding and Zoning Commission.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Cheetham and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the rule?
Cheetham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
No. Thank you. Motion will pass. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number 7, the Public Hearing Contract Rezone. This time it's been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Virgil Yankee on behalf of the North Star Supply LLC, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, to rezone and, and rezone by contract 3.99 acres, more or less, of land located on the South Fifth Avenue, south of Hildreth Road. The property is located in a residential, commercial, professional, RCP zoning district. The request is to rezone it from RCP to light industrial to be utilized for wholesale sales. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request at their meeting on January 10, 2018. I declare the public hearing open. Counsel, has there been any expertise communication?
None.
Okay. Mitch?
Good evening, Mayor and council again. I'm Mitchell Greer, Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, 600 East Oak here in Pocatello, representing the applicant on this particular proposal. What we're requesting to do, and maybe you have been out by the project, but essentially, Mr. Yankee has started construction on a building in this location. That building is going to house a new business to Pocatello, or hopefully will house a new business to Pocatello. They're consolidating operations from, throughout the region to Pocatello. They selected our location because of the access and the way it kind of works for the region, and so it's a nice positive thing for our community to bring in a new business. We're requesting, the particulars on the request, this is about a four-acre parcel, roughly. You can see it's adjacent to Century High School. Century High School's on the south. To give you a little picture of the area, this is a cap that was recently put on the south side of Century High School. As you move north on Fifth Avenue, we have the interchange tube that's kind of the key to this development. The, as you move north on, on Fifth...
And if you, one of the things you notice around this area is there's very little housing. This, this project is zoned for housing. And we believe that's probably not the most efficient use for this property, just based on its vicinity to the freeway and the fact that really most of the development that's happened in that South Fifth area in the last 15 years has been this type of development. So we hope that you'll see the logic in the rezone request. The criteria, again, we highlighted the criteria. I think for the most part, we are inconsistent with all the surrounding uses. We believe this type of use is what is in this area and what the area should be. And I think that you sort of saw the wisdom in that when, when CAP kind of located where they did. So I think with that, we would request that you certainly approve the zoning request as presented. And if you have questions, I'd be willing to answer those as well.
Counsel, any questions right now for?
That's on the west side of South Fifth?
It is, correct. I can kind of zoom in. You can see a little bit of the, kind of what the ultimate project would look like.
So between South Fifth and the freeway?
Yes, between South Fifth and the freeway.
Any other questions, council? Okay. Thank you. Staff?
Good evening again, Mayor. I'm with the council. Carl Anderson again for the record. The application before you for consideration is a rezone by contract, which, a rezone by contract of 3.99 acres, more or less, of land located adjacent to South Fifth Avenue and south of Hildreth Road. The property is currently zoned residential, commercial, professional, and the applicant is requesting a light industrial zoning, rezone by contract to the use of wholesale sales. The applicant was submitted by Virgil Yankee of North Star Supply LLC, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying. Per staff analysis detailed in the attached staff report, staff concludes that the proposed development is compatible in terms of scale, mass, coverage, density and intensity of the surrounding area. The applicant, the application for the rezone by contract was heard at the Planning and Zoning Commission held on January 10 and was recommended, and this Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the rezone by contract to city council. The council may wish to adopt the planning and zoning commission's findings of fact and approve the rezone by contract of the 3.99 acres of land from the existing residential, commercial, professional, light industrial for the sole use of wholesale sales. All noticing requirements have been met and at this time, no public comment has been received. This concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for staff, council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you leave, Carl, has there been any correspondence on this?
No.
You've received it? We haven't seen it?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'd look for any testimony supporting the application.
This is a little bit misleading in a sense. The road nearest to us is South Fifth.
Fred, I need you to state your name again.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Fred Davies and I'm the top guy up here that scribbled.
Perfect.
The road this side is South Fifth. To the left then would be Century High. The road, the light gray road on the far side of it is the freeway. That's I-15. The road on the right-hand side of it, as we're looking, is the north, which is the north hedge, goes over and is one of the only places that crosses under the freeway. That dips under and takes you down into the Portton River Valley. This is a wonderful place for an industrial complex. It would be a lousy place to house. You'd be between South Fifth and the freeway. And I don't think any of us would want to live with that kind of noise. So it's a great plan. It also has another benefit. It pays taxes. The kind of taxes that these people have been concerned with today, and I've not mentioned any names or anything like that, but we don't burden every tax on an individual. We spread it out over 60,000 people in all of their homes and everything else. It couldn't make 25 cents difference. I'm sorry, I get a little agitated when I hear this kind of thing. Maybe what we need on all of these kinds of projects is some kind of a brochure that explains how the taxes, the property taxes, county and city, really work and how we look to with the schools and all of those concerns that have come up. They're all, they're all in the process. We have good working systems to handle all of those. We're doing schools right now. And you can get into fistfights on any corner on which stand you take.
Fred, I appreciate it, but I got to get you back on topic here. You got to stay on the--
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, all I'm saying is, this is a wonderful project. It's in a good location for an industrial complex. It would not be very good for anything else. The school already has football fields and everything it needs. This is a good thing and I, I hope the council will support it. Thanks.
Super. Thank you. Any others supporting the application? Any uncommitted to the application?
Name's Jacob Hall. J-A-C-O-B. Oh, I signed in here, don't I?
Yeah.
My only thought, I am not--
I'll reset it for you to have you sign in.
No, opposed to project. I understand that they already started building and a lot of the works are in there. The only thing I'd be hesitant moving forward as you continue to develop that area is do we want Century High School being boxed in by light industrial or the likes of it? So just looking forward, I'm just thinking about my experience traveling to any high school through my athletic, my athletic cricket activities, even Utah, throughout Idaho, at least those areas I've seen. It's very uncommon. I can't think of one time I've ever seen a school boxed in by industrial and, and light industrial or just businesses alone. So that's just some food for thought moving forward.
Thank you. Any others uncommitted? Any opposed to the application? Okay. Mitch, would you like to have any kind of rebuttal there? Okay. Then with that, council, I declare the public hearing closed. Situations before you. How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the rezoning.
With first communications.
And recommend the conditions that are outlined.
Okay. And a second by Adamson. We have a motion by President Johnston and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the rule?
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson? Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Eight, Final Platte Crest View Estates Division Two. Ryan Satterfield of Satterfield Realty and Development, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, has submitted a request to subdivide approximately 28.73 acres, more or less, into 33 residential lots. The subdivision Crest View Estates Division Two is located north of Crest View Estates Division One and east of Satterfield Drive. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the preliminary plat, had their meeting on November 15, 2017, and recommended approval with conditions. Is there a motion, council?
I can make them all.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend we approve Agenda Item Number Eight, the Final Platte Crest View Estates Division Two.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the rule?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson? Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Nine, Final Platte Reconfiguration, Mountain West Division Number One. Cal Conco, represented by Cornerstone Geometric LLC, requests to amend the subdivision plan for Mountain West Division One from 93 lots to 28 lots, but keep the original number of livable units. The final plat received, approved at the city council meeting held on November 16, 2017. The applicant is also requesting the option for early building permits and constructing the structures at the same time as the subdivision infrastructure. Planning and public works recommend, staff recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the Final Platte Reconfiguration and approve the early building permits and construct, so that construction can begin while the infrastructure is being placed.
Second. Did you want any conditions on that, council?
Subject to the conditions recommended by staff.
And Heidi second. So we've got a motion by Johnston and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the rule?
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Ten, Short Platte Net Profit Subdivision. Net Profit LLC and Mark Holkinson of the Porta have submitted an application to subdivide 0.47 acres, more or less, into two lots located at 651 McKinley Avenue and 634 Pool Avenue. The subdivision is to be known as Net Profit Subdivision. Staff recommends approval with conditions outlined in the staff report.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Bray?
I move we approve this agenda item, subject to legal department, ah, subject to the recommendation by staff.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the rule?
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson? Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Eleven, Resolution Street Name Change. Street Name Change. Council may wish to consider a request by Ryan Satterfield, representing Satterfield Realty and Development Incorporated, and adopt a resolution that Ray Street in the existing Crest View Park, Sec Park, Park Second Edition subdivision be changed to Monson Street, which will continue with the Crest View Estates Division One subdivision. There are no addresses assigned to Ray Street.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the request for the name change, subject to any legal requirements that might exist.
Second.
We have a motion by President Johnston and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the rule?
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson? Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Twelve, Professional Services Agreement City Hall Remodel. Council may wish to authorize the mayor to sign a professional services agreement between the City of Pocatello and Booth Architects PLLC for architectural design, bidding and construction services of the engineering, planning and building departments remodel in City Hall, subject to legal department review, in the amount of $28,800. Funding is available in the engineering department fiscal year 2017 budget and payments will be made from Fund 78.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of Agenda Item Number Twelve, the Professional Services Agreement for City Hall Remodel, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the rule?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson? Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Thirteen, Idaho STEM Action Center Grant, Marshall Public Library. Council may wish to approve the submission of the following grant application from Marshall Public Library to the Idaho Science, Technology, Engineering and Math STEM Action Center. The $500 grant will be used to purchase supplies for hands-on activities for summer 2018 library programs for local children and teens. A Idaho Science, Technology, Engineering and Math STEM Action Center grant in the amount of $500 and if awarded, B authorize the mayor's signature on documents related to the grant, subject to legal department review, to purchase supplies for summer 2018 library programs.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve this grant and authorize your signature on the documents related to the grant, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the rule?
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson? Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Fourteen, 2018 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Application. Fire Department, council may wish to approve the submission of a grant application for the 2018 Assistance to Firefighters Grant, AFG. The grant would use, would be used to replace 87 portable radios that qualify for replacement and will no longer be supported after 2019. There is a 10% funding match, approximately $60,000.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman?
I move approval of Agenda Item Number Fourteen, the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Application.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Adamson.
Mr. Mayor, does this mean that the 10% matching would be approved at this point or after the grant's approved?
What we are doing is just giving permission to file for this grant. If the grant is awarded, they will be, come back in front of us for the--
Okay.
--to execute that grant. So a motion by Cheatham and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the rule?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson? Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Fifteen, 2018 Kenworth Dump Truck Piggyback Purchase, Street Operations. Council may wish to accept the street operations of staff recommendation and accept the NJPA piggyback bids from Kenworth Sales Company and Viking Sives for a new 2018 Kenworth Dump Truck with hydraulics and mounting hardware for a plow, wing and sander, in the amount of $188,973 and authorize the mayor's signature on the contract documents. Funds are available in the street operation department budget. Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the piggyback purchase for street operations and that we authorize the mayor's signature on the contract documents.
Second. I understand this is a replacement vehicle. Lost the motor or something on a previous one.
Okay. So this is a replacement. I know that question was asked earlier and it is indeed. Okay. Thank you. We have a motion by Bray and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the rule?
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson? Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Sixteen is Discussion Items. This time it's been set aside for your discussion items not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of a meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there's a three-minute time limit per speaker and there's 15 minutes total for this agenda item. Fred Davies?
If I'm the only one, do I get all 15 minutes?
Nope. You get three minutes. That's why I made sure I clarified that one.
I feel badly that I may have implied or given the impression that people with honest concerns were making errors. I think their concerns are unfounded and that there is a system in place, historically proven for the last 100 years, to satisfy those concerns. And I think the council is doing a remarkably good job of meeting those concerns and handling them. I do think some education into property taxes, county and city, and other concerns like that might be in order or a place where they could go get that information if there's, if they are concerned about it. I don't think it's incumbent on, incumbent on the city council to provide that instruction. Although if there are pamphlets available, and some of you would know, if there are pamphlets available, maybe they could be made available to these people. So anyway, that's all I've got to say. My main thought on coming down tonight, because I haven't been here for a long time, some of you have forgotten who I am, and I just wanted to come in and say this is a wonderful town. You're doing a wonderful job. There's a lot of game in those areas and in those hills and some of the council members and I are going to go out and get them next year. So happy, happy new year to all of you and thank you for the job you're doing.
Thank you.
The most important thing is that you haven't forgotten who you are.
That's right. Okay. Well, thank you very much. That, Fred was the only one for the agenda item number sixteen. So with that, thank you for joining us tonight. We are adjourned.